I'd like to call the meeting of the July 14th Board of Selectmen meeting to order. First, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Seeing none, if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd ask for a motion to move up item 4A.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. With us tonight is Bob Grossman. Bob, if you could come up, please. As many of you know, yes, because it'll be easier to do presentations from there. As many of you know, Bob served on the Board of Selectmen for 18 years, and we're pleased tonight to just acknowledge his work, his contributions that he's made for the last 18 years, and thank him for his service. With us tonight, we have State Senator Michael Moore and State Representative Paul Frost, and I'll ask them to come up and do their presentations first.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and to you, to the members of the Board of Selectmen. I want to thank you for allowing myself and the Senator to join you today in honoring Bob Grossman and his 18 years of public service to the community of Auburn as a member of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. When Bob was first elected in 1996, so was I, and I know it's been certainly a very, very long period of time that Bob has given of himself each and every Monday or every other Monday in just continuing giving of himself, giving of his time, his energy, to go through all the scrutiny that comes with position as an elected official, and to do that for 18 years with grace and dignity. I do want to congratulate him and thank him for being a selectman in this community and choosing to step up to the plate in helping the citizens of this town whenever possible. On a personal note, I go back with Bob, back to when I was a boy, and my sister and myself would get rides from Bob and his kids to school. Our families have been close for many, many years. I know Bob is a passionate individual. I know he cares deeply for Auburn, and I saw him at numerous events here in the community, countless events, that Bob would attend and participate in, and that's something that should also not be forgotten about Bob. So, I know Bob, you know, we're talking about maybe doing a celebrity roast or something. You know, Selectmen Simone had mentioned that to me, maybe we should have sold tickets. And that would have been a bad idea, because I would have some zingers for you, but I think today, we'll keep it at, trying to keep you from, see if we can get you to cry a little bit or something, but for you and Bonnie, I just want to say thank you, because the other part of, I think, serving on the board and being on cable access any given week and having everything you do scrutinized so much, good, bad, or indifferent, is that your wife is right there, she hears everything, she's a part of everything, she has to give you up on those Mondays, and I hope that you both can make Monday date night now, maybe, or something, I don't know, Bonnie, you can look that up, but I do hope that you guys can have, use this time in a great way for yourselves and to recognize and to understand that those of us here in the town of Auburn truly appreciate everything you've done for us. So, thank you, Bob. On behalf of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers sincere congratulations to Robert Grossman in recognition of your 18 years of dedicated public service as a member of the Auburn Board of Selectmen, including two years as chairman and three years as vice chair. The Empire Membership expresses very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this 14th day in July in the year 2014, it is signed by the Speaker of the House and offered by me, your state representative and longtime friend, Paul Frost. Congratulations, buddy.
Chairman and Board of Selectmen, thank you for inviting me here tonight, and everyone else here at the meeting. Am I speaking loud enough?
I think they're going to turn it up. Go ahead.
It is an honor to be here, it is an honor to be here tonight on Bob's behalf. For anyone who gives 18 years of their life, a commitment to their community, and it's not just a commitment of coming to the meetings every other week or every two weeks. As you all know, and I think we all know, public service, and as Bonnie knows, it's when you're going out to the football games, when you're going out to the soccer games, when you're going out to have coffee in the morning, it's people, the residents coming to you, "And, Bob, can I have some help? We got this issue." It's people coming to you at all hours, 24/7, looking for help, but I don't think a lot of people, I think a lot of voters realize that people make, and to commit 18 years of your life to it, I think speaks very highly of yourself and also Bonnie and your family for allowing you to do this, because it is a family commitment. And in recognition of that, I have for you from the State Senate, be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Robert D. Grossman in recognition of your 18 years of dedicated and honorable service to the town of Auburn, serving as an elected member of the Board of Selectmen, and be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extend best wishes for your continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate, signed by Theresa Murray, the President of the Senate, and myself, Senator Michael Moore, and thank you for all your service and thank you for all your friendship. Thank you.
So, we're going to do the Board of Selectmen proclamation, but I'd like to invite former Selectman Beth Proudie and former Selectman George Jewell up to the podium as well. If, absolutely, you can say a few words.
I came to the board as a new selectman. Bob was there. I'm not sure if you were chairman or if Jeff was, but I served with Bob for six years. Four of those years I was chair, and as you know, you get asked to a lot of things and you can't go everywhere, and those of you who know me well, I don't drive everywhere. And Bob was always willing to give his time and give up his Saturdays or his Friday night or whatever the event was to represent the town he loved, and I sure did appreciate that. Thanks, Bob.
I've known Bonnie and Bob for a long, long time. I served for four years with Bob, and he was always very, very open to the people, always willing to give his time. You always saw him at various community buildings, working with people around town. I don't know how many times I drove through Jewelry Square seeing him hold his signs and other people. Those are the memories. All the friendships that you developed over the years, yeah, there's a lot of controversial decisions that you have to make over that long time span, but it's the people you meet, the friendships, and the things that really endure, and the kindness of people in this town that really count. So, I want to congratulate you for your service very, very much, and to Bonnie, too.
And before I go over to make the presentation for the Board of Selectmen proclamation, I'll open up to board comments. Who wants to go first? Mr. Capenter?
'96 was a good year, because I got elected to the planning board the same year that Bob got elected to the Board of Selectmen, and we've had our ups and downs, but we've always stayed civil, and I always appreciated Bob's point of view, and I just think 18 years on the Board of Selectmen, I can't even imagine, and we thank you for everything you've done, and we look forward to you continuing to be involved in town government when you choose to. So, congratulations, best wishes, and of course, the better-looking Grossman is here, so we're all very happy.
Boy, Bob, you and I go back to R. H. White's. '96 was a great year. I wasn't pregnant. Right off the bat. I have had the pleasure of knowing Bob and Bonnie Grossman for a very long time. I babysat for the children as they were growing up. They are also my neighbors. Bob, you have been a wonderful neighbor to me. You have a wonderful family. You're a wonderful grandfather, husband, and a dad, and you are a wonderful selectman and a wonderful mentor to me, and I want nothing but the best for you and Bonnie. Good luck, Bob.
So, four years ago, I think you'll remember, we were in the locker room at the gym, I don't know what it's called now, but the one over on Route 20, and you said, "Just remember, as soon as you make a decision, half the town's going to love you and half the town's going to hate you." True words were never spoken to me. Gave me some good advice early on, Bob. I learned some things from you, and I enjoyed the four years that we served together, whether we agreed, disagreed, whatever it was. Certainly shared some wonderful knowledge and wisdom and experience with me, and I thank you for that. So, congratulations on your tenure here, best of luck, and whatever you choose to do from here on out, I wish you the best.
Well, Bob, it's only been a couple of years for me, but you have definitely sat here and been the voice of the town of Auburn. You've represented the town very, very well. I've learned a lot from just sitting and watching you speak, presenting your knowledge, your experience here, and that can't be beat. More people should step up, your caliber of view, to come up and just represent the town, and that makes the town go forward. To you and Bonnie, thank you very, very much for all you've done. 18 years, that's a great run, and we appreciate it. The town of Auburn appreciates it. Thank you, Bob.
I just want to, let me try this one. There we go. Bob, I just want to say, for those of you who don't know, I actually met Bob, didn't know it till many years later that we would work together, but he was my first boss when I was in, I won't say what year, at R. H. White's when I worked there, and he was a very well-respected manager at the time. We all looked up to him, and it's so fitting that he became a selectman here in the town of Auburn, that he could bring that professional experience he had at R. H. White's to the Board of Selectmen. And I just want to say personally, thank you for being here for the last three years, my first three years here, and thank you for being part of the Board of Selectmen that voted to bring me here. I'm forever grateful, and I will continue my hope in your eyes to do what's best for the town. Thank you.
So, Senator Moore said it well when he said, "When you run for public office, it's really a family affair, because if you don't have your family behind you, you don't have success." So, I want to invite Bonnie up while we make this presentation to Bob. You know, and I want to say, again, I'll steal it from Representative Frost, he used the word scrutiny twice, and really, when you're in the public eye, it's constant, constant scrutiny. And again, Representative Frost said it best, "You did it with grace and dignity." But we didn't just serve together, we're friends, and that will never go away. I so appreciate everything you taught me, the little words you'd say in my ear, making sure I was doing the right thing, and I so appreciate your friendship, but your service to the town for the 18 years. So, the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen proclamation, whereas the Board of Selectmen takes great pride in recognizing those whose efforts have made our community a better place to live, and whereas Robert D. Grossman has given selflessly of his time and talents to the Auburn community, and whereas Robert D. Grossman served on the Auburn Board of Selectmen for 18 years, both as a member and chairman, and whereas Robert D. Grossman's civic dedication and sacrifice exemplify a true citizen of Auburn and should be emulated by all the citizens, and now therefore we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Auburn, Massachusetts, recognize and congratulate Robert D. Grossman and sincerely, sincerely thank him for his many years of service to the town of Auburn.
A lot has transpired over the 25 years that I served. A lot of people say nothing ever happens. It certainly does, if you go back and look at things, where they were 18 years ago, excuse me, and where they are today, a lot has transpired, and the town is in the best condition that it has ever been in in the 18 years that I served, and hopefully, this board and future boards will keep the ball rolling and keep Auburn at the top of the, one-third of the cities and towns financially stable. I had people occasionally come to me with criticisms, some people with favorable thoughts and ideas or whatever. I always took their advice, did what I felt was best for the town. I was never influenced by any group, and I'm proud of that, and I want to say that thank you very much to everyone and all the people in town for supporting me for the six terms that I served, the town of Auburn. Thank you.
And I just want to thank everyone who came out tonight for this small reception for Bob. Thank you, we really appreciate it. And I'll just entertain a motion to a brief recess so that anyone who wants to go can go.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're in a brief recess, just for anyone who wants to go. Like to call this meeting back to order. Moving on with the agenda, we have public comment, and we have James Lemay, who wants to speak to the Fourth of July parade.
Thank you.
Good evening.
That's a tough act to follow. All right, thanks for giving me the three minutes. I'd like to start off by reading something that I had submitted to the Auburn News last year and was published on August 2nd last year. It was a disappointment over the Fourth of July festivities. There was an emptiness in my summer this year. I feel that I have not celebrated the independence of our country. I've lived in Auburn for 12 years now, and every year I have held a Fourth of July celebration at my house on Brinmarav, which starts with the parade going by the house, after which we would all go back into the backyard for a cookout, and then end the night watching the fireworks from the arena. Every year, my front yard is filled with 50 or so people from as far away as Cape Cod, with as many as 12 to 15 children eagerly awaiting for that shower of candy to fall at their feet from the passing floats. It also gave us a chance to see those neighbors we don't see very often, come out on their front lawns to see the parade and share that sense of togetherness. But not this year. Instead, it was moved across town with no regard to the people it would affect. I have old movies from the early 1960s when my grandfather lived in that same house of the parade going by, as it did every year for the past 50 years. So, I'm just wondering, why break tradition after all these years and have the parade on a weekday at 5:00 PM across town? I, like most people, work a full-time job, so I cannot see the parade this year. A couple of years ago, the Heather Parks and Recreation Department shortened the road so it did not pass by my house. I complained that this was done without notice and was promised that you would never change it again. I was wondering if the people of Auburn have a say to these changes. So, to have a cookout this year would just be a cookout. Let's bring the parade back to where it belongs. Now, this year was another disappointment for me. When I found out that the parade would not be held this year, I was angry and I was sad. I immediately went to the Home Depot and bought materials to build a very large sign, which I placed on my front lawn to show my frustration. It said, "Bring the Fourth of July parade back to Brinmarav," and I got a lot of positive feedback from that sign, a lot of toots, a lot of people stopping by and congratulating me for making that statement. I did get a little negativity. A letter was written by Jeff Labonte, an article in the Auburn Mass Daily about the parade, and he had a lot of very good, valid points, and I'd like to touch upon several of them. He stated cost was a factor, and it was cheaper to have it on a day other than the actual Fourth of July. For years before, it was always held on the Saturday before the Fourth, for at least the 12 years that I've been here. Now, also was the cost for the Shriners, which was about $5,000, as stated in that article. I'm sure we could find other acts and, you know, floats to go by in that parade that wouldn't cost us as much. He also stated logistics. The shuttle buses were not convenient for mothers with strollers going up Packerchog Hill. My neighbor, who had a two-year-old and twin six-month-old, was unable to board the bus with a triple stroller, was told by an officer that she would not be able to attend because she could not park near the event last year. Now, if citizens of Auburn solicit donations themselves, do the selectmen have to vote for the donation, and why? I understand there was a bill passed in 2009 that restricts selectmen or anyone working for the town to raise money, and I'd like to remedy that if I could.
Excuse me, Mr. Lemay, I just want to interrupt you for a minute.
Sure.
Mr. Lemay has exceeded his three minutes. Does someone want to make a motion to allow him two additional minutes?
Motion to allow him additional minutes to continue.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, we're going to give you two more minutes, but you do need to wrap it up in two minutes.
Thank you very much. I will. At the end of the letter, he said, and I quote, "We have a great tradition going here," and I ask what tradition? Having the parade at Pappas Field, or worse yet, no parade at all, that's not a tradition to me. The Brinmarav parade is. It's been this way for many years, and I, like many others, feel that they're pushing the Pappas complex on us. I say let the parade go by Dr. Pappas's house. After all, he himself lives on Brinmarav. And one final question, why was the Fourth of July committee disbanded in 2008? The committee was in trouble. Why didn't they not reach out to the town folk for support? We had no idea it was to be moved after all these years. I'm not asking for an all-day affair at Lemansky. The Pappas complex may very well be a better facility to hold the event. I just want the parade to return to Brinmarav, and anyone in this town who shares this passion, please step forward with me and support this cause. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Wayne Page.
Good evening, Wayne Page, 900 Common Road. I was watching a Conservation Commission meeting the other night, and I was just, I'm amazed that the chairmanship had been changed, which kind of surprised me, but changes are changes, whether you agree or disagree. But I would like to say tonight that I would like to thank Anne Service for being the chairman of the Conservation Commission for 22 years, and I would like to thank her as a resident for being on the Conservation Commission for 25 years. And, you know, these are the kind of people we need to keep going with these committees. And as far as I, I'm not going to get negative at this time, I'll bring that up at a later date, but I just want to say one thing on the parade on Brinmarav, you're absolutely right. It should be there, it's always been there, and when I was the chairman of the Fourth of July Committee, it was there, and it was at Lemansky Park, and the Shriners were not part of the Fourth of July, as Mr. Labonte says. That was, I think that was Memorial Day Parade, or, I'm not sure, but it was not the Fourth of July. They weren't at the Fourth of July Committee. We used to have the Worcester Fire Brigade, is what we had, and antique cars and everything else, and a lot of them did it free, for no charge, or there was a petition going through town meeting that got the money to help out with that parade in the Fourth of July. So, I totally agree with the people, the person that came up, I don't even know him. I don't know where he lives, other than I saw his sign one day, and I believe this board and whoever's decision it was to stop the parade for our residents' town was not good, and I'm going to leave it like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page. And next, we have George Jewell.
I spoke to Chairman Goodrich before the meeting, and I also let her know that I had spoken to the town engineer. I know it's not a town responsibility per se, but it is in our town. They did Route 20 all over, and it came out beautiful, but they left the center island a mess, and it detracts from all of the businesses, BJ's, Home Depot, all the car dealerships. If you drive down from where the senior citizen place residences are on Route 20, heading towards Home Depot, and you go up the center island, the sign there at the beginning is held up by a stone, there's parts of it broken up, it's a total mess, it's a disgrace after the whole road looks beautiful. So, I'm hoping that with the cooperation with the town engineer and the Board of Selectmen together, maybe you could put together a letter and ask the state to do something to take care of it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Coyle?
Through the chair, I did speak with the gentleman a few weeks ago regarding two issues that I had thought of, too, was one, the guardrail at Central Square, and one was the island that he mentions, and I do know that Mass DOT has completed the guardrail repairs in the Central Square area, and they are aware of the island as well, needs to be cleaned up. I did call them, I'll call them again tomorrow and just remind them that they've completed one of the items and see when they're going to get to the next item. So, I'm sure it's on their radar, but certainly it wouldn't hurt to follow up with another phone call. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And last, we have Tricia Joyce, who wants to speak to the Town Independence Day.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you and to the town tonight. Patricia, I am Patricia Joyce, Precinct 2 resident. I am here to express my own thoughts regarding our Independence Day celebration held this year on July 6th, which was a Sunday. My family has attended and enjoyed every Independence Day celebration in Auburn since July 4th bonfires, children's games, bike races, road races. Initially, when the celebrations began, they were held at Memorial Field on Auburn Street, and in recent years, on June Saturdays at the Auburn Recreation Complex's Lemansky Park. Prior to 2013, we enjoyed the parade and fireworks, a very short walk from our home in the Brinmarav area. When fireworks were added to the festivities, it brought greater attendance to our town's celebration. In recent years, I observed and expressed safety concerns for the steep hill setting in the limited light of the evening and the uneven sidewalks on Oxford Street as the massive crowd moved to and fro. I had traffic concerns as I observed vehicles mixing it up with bustling pedestrian traffic in the dark evening fireworks aftermath. This year, and in 2013, my family attended our Independence Day celebration at our beautiful new complex and fields, where the Pappas Park setting was met with more success this year than in its inaugural year. All our residents should know and appreciate what a great community we have gathering for events in our beautiful town resource, the doctor, and that is the Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappas Recreation Complex. I believe the new Pappas Recreation Area lends itself to a near-perfect setting for this town's celebration. I was happy to see so many intergenerational folk enjoying the evening. There were families and seniors. There were families and seniors sat on the concert lawn, as well as many very young children with adults. And I smiled when I saw so many young youth, so many youth, joining up with their peers as they moved around the park. The planning and community offerings can only expand and improve to meet the wants and needs of our residents. As next year's Independence Day holiday falls on a Saturday, there could be consideration to expand the offering. Envision a ticketed townwide picnic or barbecue on the lawn in front of the Riley Pappas Pavilion. Perhaps future years will have this independence event or another expand to more than one day. Hopefully, the All-Access Playground will be completed post-haste. Perhaps we can re-induce a different kind of parade procession, one with fewer four-wheel vehicles and more participants, especially children. Perhaps an all-age talent show competition or block party could be planned at the Pappas Recreation Park. The town where I grew up has a week-long family festival. As the crowd left the area, there was more than adequate lighting and many people helping the crowd and vehicles move safely from the area. I noticed as I walked to our car, which was a short distance, that many in the neighborhood had chairs set out where they could have their own front row seats to the fireworks. I was happy a different neighborhood had the opportunity to be up close and personal to the festivities. I wish to express thanks to all the work and volunteer time that went into the event. I especially want to thank the town administration, employees, and volunteers who planned and worked and made this year another most memorable and enjoyable event. It is my hope that Auburn works to grow this all-ages celebration with continued success. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, we have public hearings and presentations and we have the Auburn Package Store Pledge of Lica License. Just get my stuff out here. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Good evening. If you could just give your name for the record?
Good evening. My name is Gregory Demakis. I'm an attorney in Lynn and I represent the applicant, Shiv Panchem Corporation, Inc., which operates the Auburn Package Store at 196 Auburn Street in Auburn. And basically, the only thing, the only thing that's happened here is that they've refinanced their financing on their business with Mutual One. And as a condition of the financing, we're required to get a pledge and a Lica license for Mutual One. So we're asking for the board's approval. In the package you have is a certificate of good standing of the corporation, a copy of the proposed pledge agreement, and the promissory note.
Are there any questions or comments from board members? Mr. Holstrom?
No. I, there has, from what I'm seeing here in the paperwork in front of us, and you just stated there will be no changes to the operation. This is just a financial.
This is just a financial transaction. The same, the manager's the same, the hours the same, the operations the same, the DBA's the same, the owners are the same.
Thank you.
I think the lender's the same. It's just a new loan.
And this is just something required by the ABCC to?
This is something, well, the ABCC allows this pursuant to 138, Chapter 138, Section 25. They allow a lender to have a pledge and a Lica license. And this is something that's requested as a part of the loan by the bank, Mutual Bank.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I just had a quick question, a policy question. We have in the rules or the policy book that they can't actually get a loan before the approval of this board. So I'm not sure if I was reading that right or not. It seems to suggest that there should be, they should be coming to us beforehand, so...
I'm not, I'm not sure that, well, they can't, they can't move forward with the, with the pledge unless they have approval.
Right. I'm just saying, I read it in the, so I'm just asking as a general rule. I wasn't on the board when you made the rules, so I didn't know if that was a state requirement or if that was just something that the board put in as part of your Lica policy. I didn't mark the page. And it's not anything that I'm overly concerned about. I'm just...
I'm not aware of any such requirement. Many, I've involved in many transactions where a lender will give a loan and they say after the fact, please get a pledge of the Lica license. Rockland Trust does that often. Mutual Bank does that. Leader Bank does that.
Were you looking at the Lica license policy, Dan?
Yes.
Because they can't move forward with this action until, without board approval. So it's, it's kind of like a mortgage. You've got to give them everything that they need, but they can't go through with it until they have confirmation of everything.
No, like I said, I was just asking a question. I read it in the policies that you adopted, so that's why I bring up the question. But certainly not a barrier to me to grant it.
Other, Mr. Simontian?
Through the chair. You're, you're saying that what you read said that we couldn't, we could not go forward with the?
I'm sorry, Mr. Simontian, I can't hear you.
Oh, my fault. I'm just, my question to Mr. Carver through the chair, because I, I don't remember reading it, but I, I just think that if, if there is something that we have that would, that would conflict with this, it'd be better to know and clear it up. And I'm not saying that there was any wrongdoing in any way, shape, or form, but if, if it creates a conflict, it would be better to know now and fix it than...
Absolutely. I can't find the section that I have.
Do you want to take a brief recess?
No, that's fine. Like I said, I have no issue making the, granting it. I was just reading the policy, so...
I can't.
But they can't, they can't move forward with the loan until they get board approval
anyway. So they're not getting a loan without board approval.
The promissory note was signed in May. No proceeds have been released?
The promissory note was signed in May. If I could, if I can address the confusion, if there's a transfer in interest in a Lica license, before that's approved, you need the prior approval of the board and the ABCC. But a lender, but, but a licensee can get a loan. The problem with this loan is it's not secured. It's, it's like a mortgage, a pledge agreement's a mortgage. Instead of being in a real estate, it's, it's on a license. So they've given them a loan, but right now it's an unsecured loan. It's a condition of their loan that they get it secured by, in the form of a pledge approved by the town and the ABCC. But again, I've, I've been involved in many, many of these transactions and I am not aware of any municipality or state law in Massachusetts which prohibits, which requires the pre-approval of a loan. In fact, you've probably over the years have had many, many hearings for, you know, to, to get licenses approved. I don't think anybody's come in front of you ever to get a loan approved because it's not a requirement. Now, in order to get a pledge, we have to get that approval from the board. And that's what we're here for tonight.
Like I said, I just read the policy. So I'm not opposed to giving you it tonight. I'm just saying, the board adopted policies long before I sat here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of that policy.
So if I can't find it, I'm certainly not going to hold up the board's business.
So are there any other?
I'll go through it again.
Are there any other board comments or questions? Is there any public comment or question? Did you have anything else before we close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted? Is there a motion regarding the request?
Thank you very much.
We've got to take a vote regarding. That was to close the hearing.
I make a motion that we approve the pledge of Lica license provided all applicable requirements of the state and town and any departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Fair to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item we have is communications and we have a letter that I'll read. Dear, this is to the School Committee Chair, Dear Chairperson Scobie, I regretfully inform you that due to work obligations and my pending move from the town of Auburn, I will be resigning my seat of the Auburn School Committee effective September 1st, 2014. It truly has been an honor to serve and thank both present and past committee members for their support and guidance. This will be an experience I will always cherish. I would also like to recognize and express gratitude to Dr. Brunel and her entire staff for their commitment and dedication to education as our children continue to excel. Lastly, I would also like to thank the community for the opportunity to serve in this role, as well as my family and friends for their unwavering support. We also have a letter in here requesting a joint meeting per Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 11, to make this appointment. They had requested that we schedule a meeting for August 11th at 7:00 PM to make this joint Are there any questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to schedule a joint hearing for August 11th to fill the vacancy left by Chip, by Mr. Laurie in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 11. Mr. Simontian?
If, if someone, if someone wants to make a motion for the 11th, that's fine. I'm, I'm just going to ask the board if we could possibly, well, I don't know. I mean, if it has to be in the form of a motion, because we're not meeting again this month, correct?
We're not scheduled to meet, that's correct. What's?
I, I honestly think that I, I will not be around the week of the 11th, but I, I can't check my calendar right now, so I wouldn't be able, I mean, if we propose it and it happens, I would, I would like to be there, but so be it.
Well, I would, I was reminded by Mr. Holstrom that he will not be here on the 11th either, so I guess we can go back to send a correspondence to the superintendent and see if there are other meeting dates available. We could perhaps join them at one of their school committee meetings, just at the start of the meeting for a joint appointment.
Bring more or something out, that would be great.
All right. So we'll hold that until we have further information. Can we, we're not meeting to?
I don't, just so that you know, I won't be available from the 16th through the 25th in August, so just letting you know.
I see the vice chair of the school committee here. Mr. Page, do you know when you're meeting in August? When you have scheduled meetings in August?
Um, no, I don't mean that.
Okay. Well, we'll correspond with the superintendent.
I think I do, but I don't give you a date, I'm not sure.
So because we'll have to do this by email through Sharon, I'll entertain a motion to authorize a meeting scheduled in a, you know, with the school committee and that all five members of the Board of Selectmen can attend. That way, we'll have to do it by email. Yes?
So if we, we make the motion now that?
It's only?
We're, we're going to, we'll agree to a date through email correspondence and that will be the date set. That's fine. I'll, I'll make that motion. We'll set a date that, set, we'll, we'll set a date for the joint meeting with the school committee based on correspondence from all members?
Availability of all members.
All available members of the Board of Selectmen to be determined based on availability.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
And so just under discussion, then we would probably have to join them at one of their school committee meetings, I believe on Wednesday evenings, Wednesday evenings, just at the start of the meeting to make this joint appointment. And I'm sure we'll be notified who has submitted applications of interest for this. Done. Right. Right. But we'll have them available for our meeting. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Thank you. The next item we have are Board of Selectmen general items. We have interviews and potential appointments. First, we have the Finance Committee. And Mr. Bonifilio was here. If you'd come up, please, and join us at the table. You can come right up here and sit with us.
Oh, boy. Moving on up.
Chairman Hesse, you're welcome to join him. Good evening. So if you'd like to start with an opening statement or do you just want to move into questions?
No, I'll make an opening statement. I've been serving on the Finance Committee for either 12 or 13 years. I kind of misplaced a couple of years, but I volunteered for the committee soon after moving to the town of Auburn because I wanted to get involved with the town government and, you know, have an idea of what actually happens within the town. I've enjoyed my time with the Finance Committee. I also serve on the Solid Waste Recycling Committee and the School Buildings Committee as the Finance Committee representative. I'd like to continue with my work on these committees and just help the taxpayers of the town of Auburn.
Thanks. Are there any questions from Mr. Bonifilio?
Mrs. Brotherton. Welcome, Mr. Bonifilio. With everything that you're involved with, meetings have not seemed to be an issue attendance-wise?
Attendance, I think I've done very well with attendance. I'm sure my, my wife would like me to cut down my schedule, but she's not here tonight, so...
Yes.
But, you know, I've been able to keep up with all of the meetings that I've been responsible for.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Simontian?
I have one really. And I'm aware of your com, of your qualifications and we've talked on occasion, so I don't have to go there. But my question is this. Recently, at appointments for zoning board of appeals, the predominant philosophy of several members of this board were that change was needed. People who've been there for a while should be replaced by some new blood. And so my question to you is this. If we continue on with that philosophy, what do you think the effect, the net effect would be on your board and on your town to replace your 12 to 13 years of experience with someone brand new?
Well, it's hard to say. You know, experience is one thing. I am not a financial person by trade. I'm a chemist. So, you know, the business is, you know, I've learned as I've gone along. I've had many good people on the committee. Bill Westlin's one person that I mentioned, you know, kind of showed me the ropes going along. And Kevin's been great since he's been chair. You know, it's a learning experience.
I understand. You, you've been there for 12 or 13 years, so you know, you know the current makeup of the board, of, of the committee. You know how it works. You know what you do for the town better than anyone else sitting in this room, other than the person sitting next to you, obviously. So I'm just asking, I, even if, even if it's hypothetical opinion, what do you, what do you think that the impact would be to the town and to the board to replace 12 or 13 years of experience right now with someone who has not sat on that board, doesn't have any experience with how things function, how you, how you guys do business? I, I mean, it's been, that philosophy was expressed over and over again. So I'm just, if, if we were to continue with that philosophy, just give me an idea of what you think the impact would be.
Well, I think our committee in general has had some turnover in the last, you know, five to six years. There has been several people who have dropped out and then new people coming in. So there has been an influx of new blood. I mean, to strip a committee with all new people, I think it would be a disadvantage because, you know, there's a lot involved with the budget process. There's a lot involved with, you know, meeting with all of the different committees and groups and being able to navigate through everything as far as the budget goes. So, you know, I probably wouldn't agree with, you know, totally stripping a committee and going with all new people. totally stripping a committee and going with all new people. I think you have to have some cohesion of, you know, what the town plan is and what their goals are, and try to keep that within, you know, the realm of the committee. But, you know, like I said, we've had some turnover, we've had some new people, we've had some very, very good people that have come onto the committee. Some we've hated to, you know, hated to lose, but, you know, we understand commitments and time and.
I appreciate your answer, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I appreciate your service. We've, you know, I've attended many of your meetings, and just for the record, there are no other applicants. We actually have a vacancy, so we appreciate your willingness to continue to serve.
Sure.
You know, it's a tough board, and, and we don't get many applicants for that board because of the, the nature of the board and the financial aspect of it, and the incredible time commitment. So, as you stated, you do have, you do make that time and commitment, especially, you know, from what is it, late December to town meeting, when you're meeting weekly.
That's, that's the toughest period of time.
It is, it is a huge commitment, so, so you are our precinct-
One.
One representative. Thank you.
Chairman Chair, I would like to make a motion to that we reappoint Mr. Bonifilio to a three-year term of precinct one.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Hesse. Moving on, we have Zoning Board of Appeals. And all interviews have been had. We have currently, what we'll start with is the appointment of two to the full positions, the permanent positions. Mr. Holstrom?
I'd like to make a motion to have Michael Maron as one of the full positions on the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Is there a second?
Second.
We're under discussion, is there a discussion? So, we have Mr. Maron nominated for a full position. Is, are those questions, or are we, do you have a question?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Congratulations. You did first, but go ahead, if you're deferring to Mr. Simonian.
Oh, I'd like to nominate Michael Robideau for the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Is there a second? There's no second, moving on?
Make a motion that we appoint Dennis Nattoli as a full member.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none? All those in favor? Two opposed, and the chairman is going to abstain, so the motion fails two to two. Is there another motion?
Make a motion that we appoint Megan Roach as a full member.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Simonian? Are you-
Opposed.
Opposed, okay. So, it's four to, four to one for Megan Roach. Okay, so we just voted for Megan Roach for a full appointment, and Sharon's just asked for clarification, so on- Dennis Nattoli, so it was Mr. Simonian and Mr. Carpenter, yes, Mrs. Brotherton and Mr. Holstrom, no, and I abstained. So, we've filled the two permanent seats, we now have a vacancy for one. Miss Nattoli continues to serve as an alternate through next year, so we have now, having moved Megan Roach into a permanent position, we have a vacancy for an alternate position. Is there a motion for the alternate position, Mr.?
I would like to make a motion for Karen Blaze to be the alternate.
Is there a second? Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Congratulations to our new members. If you could go to the town clerk's office as soon as you're available to be sworn in, and then please check in with Adam Burney at Inspection Services. I believe your first meeting is this Thursday. Okay, so you can pick your, your appointment slip up in the manager's office and then go over and be sworn in. Okay? Thank you. Next item we have is a second-hand license for Adams Estate Jewelry at 871 Southbridge Street. If you can come up to the microphone, please. Good evening.
Hello.
If you can just identify yourself for the record.
My name is Adam Rosario. I'm the owner of Adams Estate Jewelry, 871 Southbridge Street, Auburn.
Okay, and you're currently operating?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. So, just for, so for the board's information, under the new Mass General Law, is it Mass General Law, these licenses now become due at the end of, the end of April. So they, so to be in line with Mass General Law, we needed to pull this out of our annual applications, and these licenses run now from May 1st through the end of April. And because we were operating under new policies and new Mass General Law, this applicant's applied in time, but it didn't get to us because of the process. So, he's here before us to have his license in line with the Mass General Law, if you want to say.
Through the chair, and also, as the board may recall, they passed their new policies regarding second-hand licenses in January of 13, so this would be the first applicant that's come in under those new policies. Normally, this would be a renewal, but because there were new policies, the board had discussed the fact that in order to get in line with Mass General Law, as the chair said, the applicants would have to come in as a new applicant, which is why you see an entirely new application. I also just want to make a note that Detective Sergeant Mills is here from the Auburn Police Department. If there are any questions, he is the one who's in charge of overseeing the second-hand licenses.
Do we want to invite Detective Sergeant Mills up? All members have questions?
Please.
Sergeant Mills, if you want to come up and join us up here, please. So, I guess, good evening, welcome. Thank you for being here. So, I guess we just want to, I'm sure you're aware, we've had several hearings with violations with these licenses, so we want to get some information from you regarding some, you know, any action that you may or may not have taken on this.
Well, first of all, I commend the board for taking the action to enact the policy in the first place. Excuse me, in my estimation, it was one of the bigger problems that was facing the town as far as, there was a lot of stolen property that was being taken in through these outlets, whether knowingly or not knowingly, but nonetheless, it was, it was occurring. Like the town manager said, the policy was enacted, I believe, or approved January of 13, but there's been a bit of a transition period trying to, trying to get everybody on board and trying to get everybody in line, essentially, because the way the Mass General Laws read is that they run, I believe it's May 1st, April 30th, versus January to December, which would, which is the way they used to run. We did have a few issues. There was an outlet on Route 20 that was brought before the board several times for violations of their license, and they've since been removed from the town as far as conducting business here. There was a kiosk in the mall that was buying gold that, they weren't brought up necessarily on any violations, but I was a fairly frequent visitor once I took over to his kiosk for, you know, reasons that there was stolen property being taken in there. And one day, that particular individual just didn't show up and hasn't been back, so he just, I actually don't know where he is at this point. At this point, the only second-hand gold buyers that we have in, or, I'm sorry, gold buyers in general, and the policy covers second-hand electronics, any, any sort of equipment. So, I'm working to try and get GameStop, working through their corporate people, I actually had a conversation today to make that happen. Best Buy in the mall, the Best Buy mobile store is already, already on board. But as far as the jewelers in town currently, it's just Mr. Rosario and Hanush Jewelers in the mall, which I believe they're also coming up shortly for the same process. And I find myself in kind of a unique position of defending, I guess, Adam in a sense, that he has done everything that he's been asked to do by us. They report, in case you're not familiar with the policy, they, they report in whenever they have enough to report in, but it's almost daily, essentially. They submit a spreadsheet via email to me, but it also goes to, it's called BRISNET, it's the Regional Information Sharing System, and through NESPEN, which is the New England State Police Information Network. So, it's a, it's a pawn database, basically, for all, all second-hand jewelry, any jewelry, watches, game systems, that type of stuff, those type of properties. And obviously, like I said, we're trying to get GameStop on board as well, and I had a conversation with their district manager today, actually, and I believe he was going to contact the town manager's office and get the process going. So, our goal is to obviously have as many, as many outlet, well, every outlet that we think of, and it seems like one comes up every now and then. I just became aware of a, an iPhone repair store on Route 20. I've known about its business, I just wasn't aware that they were purchasing items, so I'll be getting out to see them and I'll hand them a copy of the policy and tell them to make application. But again, Adam, Mr. Rosario, has done everything that we've asked of him. He, I have, you know, the records, not currently with me, but in my email, going back to December 5th. I took over in, in the Detective Bureau in October, and it was kind of a priority, so we finally got them. We had the gentleman from, he's a retired state trooper from NESPEN come out, and so we got them all in line during the month of November, and they began reporting December, beginning of December, so. Thank you.
Mr. Simonian, then Mr. Holstrom.
Just, just something for clarification. You, you made a statement, and I either didn't hear what you prefaced it with or what you concluded it with. You said that Mr. Rosario and Hanush Jewelers were the only two dealers doing something, and I, I didn't hear what that was.
They're the only two outlets in town that are purchasing gold or second-hand jewelry.
Oh, okay, so the, like, the other place in the mall, Kay Jewelers, they're not doing any, okay.
Kay Jewelers does not.
Okay.
The Best Buy mobile store actually signed up, they, they got licensed, but they, they actually don't purchase, they only, well, they purchase the items, but they only issue store credit. But despite that, their corporate people, Mr. Leonetti is his last, is his name, you know, they were totally, they've dealt with other similar ordinances in other towns and cities, so.
I, I didn't hear the first part of the statement, so that's what I wanted to ask. And I just, I'd like to say to Mr. Rosario, hearing that statement, I'd just like to commend you, because whether you're aware of it or not, as Sergeant Mills said, we've had other people here. So, it's nice to hear that you're taking the time to do things properly, understand the policy, and not, not have any issues before us, so thanks for, thanks for that.
Thank you. I would like to add, I have not purchased, like, anything other than jewelry or coins. Like, that's, that's my niche. There's a large world of electronics and everything out there. I try to stay particular to what I know and what I do best. And Mr. Mills, he comes into my location and he makes sure that we're up to date on, you know, a regular basis, and we have, I basically refigured the business to make sure that it works perfectly with the town laws and requirements.
Thank you.
Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair. Mr. Rosario, it, on your application here, it says, have you owned or operated any substantially similar license within five years prior to the application date? It says, no. What experience, what background, what brings you to this business, this type of business here in Auburn?
I, February 17th of 2012, I was issued my first junk license with the town, so I've had this license for two years, reoccurring. And I do have a lot of experience. Might have been, I don't know, something that was missed in the application, but I've been in the industry. I've actually worked, I've managed Kay Jewelers in Auburn Mall, and I've also managed Gordon's Jewelers before they closed. They did a national close down. So, I've been in the industry for quite some time, just under ten years, and so I, I know a lot about the industry.
Okay, thank you. Just as a follow-up, through the chair to the town manager, I guess, the application we have in front of us, he says, within five years prior to the application date, it says, no. And if there was, yes, where? I guess what we should do is update that application, so we have some background of where he's been and what he's done prior to, you know, this application process tonight.
Absolutely, yeah.
Do you have any other employees?
Uh, just one.
Okay.
But that, that may cease to occur very soon.
But you have one now-
Currently, yes.
You could potentially have another one in the future. Is that person completely aware of the policies, the requirements, you know, whether it's taking a copy of someone's license, or, or weighing things, taking all the information as required per the policy?
Yes, absolutely, and I actually submitted information that was requested upon by the Auburn Police, so everything is currently up to date.
And Sergeant Mills, have you had any issues with the employees not providing anything that you needed?
None, excuse me, none whatsoever, as far as when there have been issues. We've resolved, we've been able to resolve them, we've recovered the property, be it for our town or for another town. They've generally been very cooperative. If I may, Mr. Holstrom, I think that refers to licenses of a similar type within the five-year period, or whatever that is, I believe. I'm not 100% sure.
Okay. Well, that was my interpretation, that's why I just, I saw that here, and so I want to be sure we have, if there is some history, we should have with the application.
I agree. I, I think I like that question.
I'm going to have a little-
Through the chair, we could put a note to the file. We wouldn't change the application because the application is submitted to us by the applicant and signed as to the validity of the statements in it, so we would not make any change to the application, but we could put a note in the file-
Regarding this application.
-that the question was asked, and there was other experience that was pertinent, although not specific to this type of license.
Thank you.
So, I, I do have one more question. I don't know if other board members do. So, being the agency and your, you know, the Detective Bureau who handles this, do you have any concerns with this board issuing this license?
I don't have any concerns. Both, both Mr. Rosario and Hanush have been extremely cooperative-
Excellent.
They've done everything that we've asked of them.
Excellent, okay. Are there other questions or comments? Do you have anything else you want to add?
Well, tonight's the first night that my children are watching the TV, so.
So, say hello to them.
I see Brooklyn and Roman.
That is-
My wife.
That's the best. Did you say their names?
Brooklyn, Roman, and Caitlin.
Very nice. Now go to bed. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion regarding the license.
Motion to approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town, any, any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the recommendations of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, Sharon. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item we have is gift acceptance in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three B. We have a gift from Republic Waste in the amount of $500 to the Senior Center Elders Affairs Division for the purchase of a laptop for the Senior Center. Is there a motion?
Motion accept with gratitude.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Next, we have town manager items. Mrs. Jacobson?
Through the chair. I don't know if you can hear me on this tonight. Can you hear me?
Barely.
There you go. I'll try to speak louder.
Try that one right there.
Through the chair, I did put a, here we go, I did put an item in the packet to go along with this, just basically explaining, which I'd be happy to do now, so people watching can understand. The, we're very fortunate. Representative Paul Frost and Senator Michael Moore have done a, a great job advocating for various funding on behalf of the town at the state level, and this year is no exception. They had each separately contacted me a couple of months ago to ask me what we might be interested in putting in the state budget that would help meet one of the priorities of the town. It does have to follow certain, certain criteria, and I'm- It does have to follow certain criteria, and I met with both of them, and then we all met together and felt that it would be beneficial to ask for $80,000 in the state budget for the playground at Pappas Complex. The reason for this is, we can get the $80,000 along with the approximately $30,000, last I heard officially, it was $20,000, then I later heard an update that it was $30,000 that the Friends of the Pappas Recreation Complex had raised for the playground. So with the $80,000 and the money that they raised, this then triggers the matching grant challenge that Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappas gave to the town about a little over a year ago, to raise $100,000. And if $100,000 could be raised, and the challenge was put toward the Friends of the Recreation Complex and the town residents, because again, the town employees themselves, we can't seek donations, so it was done through the not-for-profit Friends of, if they could raise $100,000, the Pappas family would then match that with $100,000. So the $80,000, we felt, would be better leveraged than many other things, because it would open the door to the other $100,000 and enable the playground to move forward. And when I submitted this to you, I actually put it in the packet on Thursday. On Friday, the governor's budget was passed, and I received confirmation first thing this morning, that it was passed without any amendments or changes to this line item. So this is confirmed, the money is available to us, I'm waiting for Senator Moore's office to get back to me. I asked them to get me some details on the timeline for when the funds would become available, and they are reaching out to the Office of A&amp;F, Administration of Finance, to find out when those funds might become available. So at this point, we will notify the Pappas family, and thank them for their generous donation, and start the wheels in motion. We'll also notify the Friends of the Pappas Complex to let them know that the funds are secured, and this will free up, again, that matching grant. So all told, we should have somewhere between $200 and $210,000 for the playground. So we can start now to get together and plan the next steps for the playground, and there are a lot of steps to move forward on it. But the plan was that we were going to meet with the Friends, as well as with DPW Director Bill Coyle, myself, Ed Kaczynowicz, CFO, and the Pappas family, to determine how we move forward with both the grant that's coming in, and the state funds, and any permitting and licensing and approvals that we need to move this budget forward. So it's exciting news. We really want to thank Representative Frost and Senator Michael Moore, first of all, for advocating for us, but most importantly, for working together on a priority that actually, they both worked on it, and when it went to the conference committee, there were no changes, because both the House and the Senate were in agreement. I also should mention that, I believe jointly as well, they put in for $5,000 for a summer camp program for Auburn Youth and Family Services, and again, that is to benefit the community, Auburn Youth and Family Services does a great job, so my understanding is that those funds are in place as well, that those went through. So, thank you.
Excellent. Another item, Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
You can come up to the table, please.
DPW Director Bill Coyle is going to come up, you have information in your packet, and he's going to go over that in detail with you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Julie and Sharon, before I go over the list of projects I have, I just want to mention that I'm going to have this information put on the town website tomorrow, for anyone who wants to view it, because there's a number of streets on the list. And what I'd like to do first is go over the roadways that we've completed to date, and give an update on the current contract, that the contractor, PJ Albert, has been working on, which we have mostly completed with, but I'll run through the streets and give you an update on this current contract. Last year, the work began in the fall, and it was a total contract value of about $1.1 million, and it was 3.7 miles of roadways within this contract. We started work on Sword Street and A Street, where it was towards the end of the year, we were limited to what we could get done, but we were able to get those two roadways done, and also a small portion of Rochdale Street as well, near Zabel Roadway. This spring, we continued on with the project, and we have completed the work on Colonial Road, Gilbert Way, Hampton Street, the majority of that, the portion between Elmwood and the city line has been completed. There's a smaller portion, which was being milled and overlaid between Elmwood and Route 12, that's about 50% complete. Idlewood Drive was complete, Little Drive, Maria Avenue, Mill Street, from Millbury Street to Route 20. Millbury Street has recently been completed approximately 95%, we still have some remaining hydro seeding to do in that area, and some punch list items as well, in addition to replanting, or not re, but planting five new trees, replaced trees that had been removed as well, which that'll probably occur closer to September versus planting the trees in the heat of the summer. So that completes the work that was done on the current contract. Around April, we were notified from Mass DOT that the town was going to receive an additional $92,179, and this was called the Winter Rapid Recovery Road Program. There had been talk over the past couple of years relative to increasing our Chapter 90 funds from 200 million throughout the state to 300 million, so we receive about 620,000 from the state. So they never did increase the Chapter 90, but we did get this additional funding. So rather than getting a 50% increase, we did get an additional 92,000. These funds have to be spent by the end of October, and because we have a current contract in place with PJ Albert, we are able to go up to a maximum of 25% over their contract value before we'd have to go out to re-advertise the project. So we have looked at a number of streets within town, and what we can do for work to improve our roadway conditions, and to extend the life of some of the existing roads. And what we are proposing to do, or are going to do, obviously with the support of the board and the town manager, is to complete West Street improvements. The town is moving forward with improvements for the new middle school from Route 12 to approximately the bolt ramp. The section from the bolt ramp of West Street beyond the bridge, which is roughly the area where Dix Tyabon used to be years ago, is in very rough condition, and these funds were targeted for, they call it the pothole funds, this is what is geared towards roadways, that we have significant problems with potholes, and we're constantly out patching potholes throughout the winter. West Street is one of those roads. All through the winter, we're out there patching potholes. The roadway is in a condition where if we don't go in and mill and overlay that roadway, we're going to be pulverizing this roadway. So it's an excellent candidate, because it's a major cut-through commuter route for the town, and it can be done at probably 35 to 40% less money if we do it now as a mill and overlay. Versus most of the roads that you see us doing currently, we pulverize the road, because it's gone so far that they can't be milled, and we grind off an inch and a half and repave it. They've gone beyond that, and it costs approximately 35 to 40% more to pulverize the roadway. So ideally, you like to get away from pulverizing all your roads, because it's not the most cost-effective way to maintain your roadway infrastructure, but unfortunately, our roads are in such a state that the large percentage of the roads are at that point. So West Street is approximately 5,200 feet, we would use $92,000 from the Winter Rapid Recovery Road Program, and $86,000 in Engineers roadway account. This work would occur within probably the next few weeks. We could mill and overlay this and have this section completely done, and I will match the limit, or meet the limit, of where the contract for the new middle school will end their work. And that work would happen this year under the current contract. In addition, we are also working on the FY 2015 contract, and I have a list of roadways, again, they'll be on the website, the town's website, but I'll run through the list, and I will, if I don't mention the limits, because it's the entire roadway, so if it's not the entire roadway, I'll read off what the limits of the work would be. And this is a total of 4.2 miles of roadway, and it's Bay Ridge Road from Ravine Drive to Alpine Trail, Burnett Street for its entirety, Brook Road from Rockland Road to the end, Curtis Street, Federal Hill Road, George Street, Goulding Drive, Grove Street, Heritage Drive, Hickory Lane, Highland Street, Jefferson Drive, Karen Avenue, Loner Drive, Mountview Avenue, Munger Drive, Ravine Drive from Shore Drive to Bay Ridge Road, Sarah Drive, Shore Drive from Woodland Road to Number 27 Shore Drive, Stone Street, Westland Ave. from Harrison Avenue to Number 9 Westland Avenue, and Weatherford Street from Highland to Rockland, the entire line. Again, this is approximately 4.2 miles of road. The current estimate is about $1.4 million, of which approximately 620,000 will be state funds, and approximately 780,000 will be local funds, town funds. That current contract is anticipated to be advertised for construction and awarded by the end of August. Our hopes is that we can start some of these roads this year, but realistically, by the time we award the contract, most contractors aren't waiting for the town of Auburn to say you can start your work on our roads now, so they have other projects they're working on. So we'll try to prioritize some of the roads and see what we can get done before the winter, but the majority of this work would occur next year. And I'll be happy to answer any questions relative to this list.
One quick question, through the chair, and how are you doing tonight, Phil?
I'm very good, thank you.
Good. One thing that has always been a problem, in just my years of dealing with it, is Brook Road and Rockland Road to the end. There's always been that issue of water down there. We're going to repave that road, we're going to take care of that road. That's always been a problem with water down there. Is there going to be extra work done to that road to alleviate some of those problems?
Well, there's two things. One is Brook Road is within 100-year floodplain, so there's a certain amount of flooding that's going to occur that we'll never be able to prevent during that type of storm event. If there's any localized drainage issues, we always look at all the roads for localized issues. But unfortunately, that particular location, being within that floodplain, there's really nothing that you can do to alleviate that situation.
Okay. And one other question, I had a resident call me about Stone and Grove Street, and he was asking if it was going to be done this year. I said it's going to be done fiscal year 2015, so that gives us till June 30 of next year. You're saying maybe possibly a majority of these roads are going to be done, starting probably in the spring in the good weather?
Well, we typically would phase them with certain neighborhoods.
Okay.
And even though it's termed the FY 2015 contract, it can potentially go into July and August to complete, because there's also Chapter 90 funds that carry over from year to year. So they wouldn't necessarily all be completed by June 30, just as the current contract is still ongoing. But we would, once we go out to bid, again, we haven't, that hasn't happened yet, once we go out to bid, we're going to try to lump these into certain phases on where the contractor will work.
And you'll continue to update on the computer, or the internet, rather, that, you know, what roads are being done, and what roads are scheduled to be done next?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Cappenter.
Phil, when you're doing roads, do you look at the sidewalks?
Yes.
Because there's a lot of complaints about the condition of the sidewalks. You might have a brand-new road, but the sidewalks don't seem to get touched.
I can tell you, for the most part, any road that we have gone in, and particularly reconstructed, the sidewalks have been done. The one example I can think of that hasn't is probably Rockland Road, and that's because when we did Rockland Road at the time, the town was not contributing the $500,000 per year. So we were at a point where we were basically trying to stretch the dollar, and we overweighted sidewalks on Rockland Road, but we didn't reconstruct them. It was a significant savings to do that, but, you know, ideally, pulverize that type of road, new curbing, new sidewalk, similar to Boy Street, would be the preferred method of construction, and I think since that particular road, and since the town has been contributing the additional funds, I believe any sidewalk that currently exists in the area that we've, on these roadways, I believe they've been reconstructed.
Thank you.
Did you have something, Simone? Did you have your hand up?
No, I was going to ask about the sidewalks, so.
Oh, okay.
Saved me the time.
So I'll just ask a quick question. First of all, we've made a significant contribution to the road repairs, and you can see it driving around town, I mean, you can just, so many roads were in such poor condition, and having them done has made a huge difference. But of course, people will see this list, and want to know when their road will be done. How is, do you have a list beyond this, a tentative list, and if not, how can residents contact you, or should they contact you regarding the condition of their road, and when it will be placed on the list?
Be happy to answer any questions that a resident may have on the road that they live on, because we do have a list of every roadway in town, we evaluate all these roads every year. So I can review with them what the condition of their roadway is, what it is rated, we have a sliding scale, one through five, one being the worst, five being the best, and we try to prioritize a lot of the ones, but we have to also keep in mind that the philosophy of keeping your good roads good, you don't want them to get to a point where they all become number ones, otherwise you're always paying a larger percentage. So I'd be happy to answer the question, I would tell them where they are for a rating. I try not to commit to anybody what year, only because I don't know what we have for funding until town meeting votes approval of the budget, and until Chapter 90 funds are released, so I'll try to give them an idea of the condition, and they can kind of gather where it stands from that, without committing to what year we'll do it.
Okay, so can you just elaborate a little bit on your rating system, so those watching, because, I mean, people think like, oh, my road hasn't been paved, you know, since the 60s, and we should be next, but that's not necessarily true, it's based on, so what is the criteria that you look at in your rating system to evaluate it, so people listening can understand?
I can tell you, myself and the Assistant Town Engineer, we'll drive each road each year in the spring, and we evaluate them, and to see if the rating has changed on that roadway. We have, I can approximate, without going back probably four or five years ago, how many roads that would have been considered rated the number one, which is very poor, we're probably somewhere around 60 to 70 roads, maybe, maybe even 80, and after this list that I read to you tonight, and FY 15 is complete, we'll have about 10 roads left in that condition.
You've gone from 60 to 70, poor to 10? Excellent.
Right, right, so that's about 3.6% of our roads, there's 280 roads in town, so it's about 3.6% of the roads that are rated one. Now, number two is still not in good condition or fair condition, okay? And those roads, unfortunately, are also deteriorating, those are, I would say, still from poor to fair condition. They're not, certainly not in good condition by any means, and it's not until you get into the three, four, and five. Five is a brand-new road that was just paved, four would be a road that's probably, you know, less than 10 years old, and is still in very good condition. And then you have the roads that fall in the middle that are rated number three. And what we're doing is that the town will be purchasing a crack sealing machine, and you'll see that the DPW employees out early this fall, crack sealing roadways, and we're going to look at roads that are fairly new, and start crack sealing the newer roads, and then working down our list. So roads that were rated number five, that may actually have some cracks appearing, we'll crack seal those, and then work down the list. And then the same thing, this list is the number-one roads, and some may be number two or three, if we can mill and overlay them, and then work towards the middle. And unfortunately, that middle portion of it are the roads that will probably deteriorate over time, and may end up needing to be pulverized. The unfortunate thing is the roads that are already at the point that need to be pulverized, whether or not we do them this year or next year, you've already lost that road, it's already at a point where you have to pulverize it, and turn it into gravel, grade it, and rebuild the whole roadway, so.
Mr. Simone.
So when you talk about pulverizing, you're talking about the ones that have to be completely reconstructed, right?
Correct.
And on the title of this list, it says reconstruction and resurfacing, so I'm just, for the sake of, I understand, if it wouldn't be too much trouble, when you submit this list, or put it up on the website for public viewing, could you just designate which ones for us are being resurfaced, and which ones are being reconstructed? Because you and I have had a lot of conversations, and I understand the huge difference in cost of just resurfacing versus reconstructing, and what goes into it, and I think it would just be nice to know which ones we actually have to reconstruct.
I can tell you, on this list... I can tell you, on this list, every one of these roads is reconstructed.
Well, I was going to say, because I know several of these roads, and I've seen the conditions, because I know folks who live on them.
It's just a title that we've used, I guess, over time, and you're right. We could break that down. I mean, ideally, I'd love to get to a point where we're milling and overlaying roads. It's less expensive, but you have to look at the life expectancy as well, because the cracks do come through a roadway that you do milling and overlay. So you're going to get less life out of that roadway as well.
If you, when we have to reconstruct the road, I'm sure there's a lot of factors that go into it. What, like, traffic and all that, but what's the average that, you know, the state or the town or whatever gets out of a road after we, you know?
I can tell you, West Street, and I remember in 1994, because I was in Auburn when I worked for Mast D O T, and I ran the public caring for that bridge. So that was 20 years ago. So that roadway was reconstructed 20 years ago. Now, I can't remember the segment just between the railroad bridge on West Street and Rochester Street. I thought that had been reconstructed just prior to the bridge. That segment is actually older than 20 years. Rule of thumb is 20 years when you reconstruct a roadway.
Okay.
There are some roads, though, that I think we'll probably get more than 20 years out of, depending on the traffic, and some that we're going to get less than 20 years. Milling and resurfacing, rule of thumb was 10 years. And again, you may get more time out of that, and you may get less depending on the traffic volumes.
Thank you.
Is there anyone on this item? I think you need to stay for the next item as well, if you wouldn't mind.
Actually, I think it's Mr. Barney.
Oh, Mr. Barney, sorry.
But he's welcome to stay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barney.
To the next item, Mr. Barney, please.
Should I come up there?
Yes, please. I can hear you better. We can hear you all the time, but.
I'm pretty loud, so you can probably hear me from wherever I sit.
So we are on the Town Manager item, vote to transfer the property at the corner of Burnett and Rochdale Street to Christopher Gervais.
In your packet, you have a small, well, smaller than I intended it to be, plan of the combination. Mr. Gervais lives at 14 Rochelle Street, and there is a, I don't know if it's a trapezoid or a rhombus, at the corner of Rochdale and Burnett. And it is, it's literally the corner of the roadway. And it's essentially two triangular pieces that meet and wrap the corner and border only 14 Rochelle. Mr. Gervais approached us and said he would like to purchase the lot in order to combine with his lot.
Just if you can just hold it up and point it out, so everyone knows what you're referring to.
So the circle is Rochelle.
Yep.
The house is 14. And this odd piece of property here is actually owned by the town. So.
Can you point that out again?
Yeah, he's talking, this is the house.
Yeah.
And this is the piece of property.
Oh, all right, okay.
I don't know if that's going to show up any better, but.
All right.
The blue parcel is owned by the town. Mr. Gervais and the Town Manager agreed that he would be willing to pay the current assessed value of $1,200 to purchase the parcel. And he signed a purchase and sale, submitted a down payment, and this would be the final step prior to any conveyance. He's gone through and had an approval-not-required plan done with the planning board, so he's incurred the expense of surveying and getting the approval, which is a requirement of the purchase and sale agreement on all the small parcels that we've done the last two years. And this is a piece of property that we researched, we discussed with the DPW Director. It has no real value to the town. Nobody's really able to identify how the town sort of came to own it. The assumption is that it was at some point part of the road construction for Burnett and is now just languishing.
Mr. Simone?
Yeah, just before we get into discussion, I just want to put it out there for the sake of, I've known Mr. Gervais for a number of years. His daughter played softball with mine, so just from a disclosure standpoint, I know him pretty well, and I obviously have no interest in this or gain in any way, but I want to put it out there that I do know him.
Does acquiring frontage, a significant amount of frontage, change the layout or give him an opportunity to do anything else with the? He'll now have frontage on Burnett Street. It appears more frontage on Burnett Street for that piece of property than on Rochelle Street. Does that change?
No, it doesn't. The conditions of the purchase and sale also require that it only be used for accessory buildings, that it be combined as a singular parcel. And the practical application of the frontage on Burnett Street is, it's a 45 or so-degree hill, so there's no, it's not really traversable. It would give him the ability to cut back some of the vegetation, have his yard appear more opened up, but I don't think that it gives him any advantage to Burnett Street in any way.
And the conditions were an accessory, accessory buildings to shed, et cetera?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Anything else? Do you have anything else?
No.
So I will entertain a motion to transfer the property at the corner of Burnett and Rochdale Street, as shown on map 16, block 20, to Christopher Gervais.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted?
Thank you, Mr. Barney.
Thank you.
So we are still on Town Manager items. Did you have anything else?
You know, I just want to say a quick thank you to all of those who participated in the Independence Day event, the elected officials, all of the participants, all the attendees that we had. And I want to thank all of the individuals who helped plan this, from the volunteers to some of the residents and the employees. It was a lot of effort. It takes months and months to pull it off. And, you know, I think one thing to note, and it's hard to have events changed, and I don't want to respond to individual comments, and we've done reports on this, but I do want to say a lot of towns have 501(c)(3)'s that have been established just to have Independence Day events. And those 501(c)(3)'s, like the Friends of the Pappas Recreation, were established so they could fundraise. We do not have that here, so everything that's been done has been done through the contributions of businesses that have been not solicited by anyone on the town side, but they were aware that we're doing these events and they've stepped forward. So I just want to, again, thank Hometown Bank. If you recall, the board accepted $2,500 for them, for the band. We also had the WRTA, which worked with us on the buses and the shuttles. And we had four buses this year. And also want to thank Auburn Mall that provided the parking and their facility for us. It takes, it's a collaborative effort, and it takes a lot of people to get all the pieces together to pull it off. So I want to make sure that we thank everyone who did help and those who did donate, and obviously all those who attended. And I want to thank the weather, too, for cooperating on the second day, because that would have been.
A disaster.
Very much of a challenge. But it turned out to be a decent day. So thank you all for coming.
There are no tabled items. Moving on to Board of Selectmen member items. The first item is Mr. Simone, Board of Selectmen policies.
This is the last time I'm going to bring this up, but I'm just going to put it this Because I'd just like to draw an example of how I feel about this. During the six years that I served in our Navy, every time we went overseas, didn't matter if it had been a port that we had gone to before, we always had a port brief. We were always reminded that every time we set foot in a town in another country, we were seen by the people in that country as representatives of the United States. And how we acted would certainly either be looked on favorably or unfavorably as how Americans acted. And some people that I served with didn't think that was fair, that we were held to such a higher standard. I never felt that way, and I feel the same way sitting on this board. We sit here, and in the four years I've been here, we've taken licenses away from businesses for not following the rules. We've carried out, under our policies and our rules, punishments for businesses and other folks for not following the rules. We've enacted policies on this board. We've set a standard. We've made those our policies that we're supposed to follow. So it's been discussed a few times. I feel there's times where we haven't followed our own policies. I think we should hold ourselves to the higher standard, especially since we're going to sit here and tell people that we're taking their license away or suspending it because they're not following the rules, and then we don't follow our own policies. So I made this statement a couple of weeks ago, and I'm just going to put it out there so that every member of this board understands how I feel about it. If I feel that we're not following one of our policies, and everyone's entitled to their own opinion, that's fine. But if I feel that we're not following a policy, I'm not going to participate in that part of the meeting. I will get up and leave for that stretch. I don't want it to be misconstrued as I'm being combative or anything else. I just, I serve the people who elected me. No ifs, ands, or buts. I hold myself to a higher standard, and we should follow the rules the same as we expect the people who appear before us. That's the last I'm going to say in it. Hopefully, everyone understands how deeply I feel about that and how I feel about the standard that I hold myself to sitting on this board, and that's it.
If there's nothing else on that, we'll move on to the next item. Energy discussion, also by Mr. Simone, and request the Board of Selectmen vote to request a joint meeting with the Wind Turbine and Alternative Energy Committee at a date to be mutually determined to discuss solar energy opportunities. Mr. Simone?
Yes, I watched the, I've watched the last meeting of the Alternative Energy Committee, and there's been discussion for probably close to almost a year now. Other things have been proposed, there's been more talk of solar. And it seems to a degree that we've kind of stagnated. We had this, we had this strategy of moving forward with the wind turbine. We spent considerable amount of time doing studies, and we've, you know, there's been money invested, grants, a lot of time from, you know, people in the town, members of the Energy Committee. Mr. Plutukas is here, the Chair of the Committee. And I just feel that in some ways, we're sort of spinning our wheels, because we had this strategy, or at least we were moving forward with the wind turbine, and we kind of stagnated, because now there's been, well, I think this would be a better thing to do. I think that would be a better thing to do. So in, my thought is, in the essence of going forward with what's best for the residents of the town from an energy standpoint, putting a plan together, putting a strategy together, and sticking to it, as we have with other things like our financial policies, it would be a good idea for the Board of Selectmen and the Alternative Energy Committee to have a joint meeting, sit down, discuss those options, what's been proposed, what we've invested already, and figure out what's the best thing to do for the residents, because we can just continue to waste time saying, well, we're moving in this direction. Oh, wait, I have a better idea. And then it stalls, because we're, you know, now we're, maybe we should do this, maybe we should do that. So that's my reason for bringing this up and wanting to have a joint meeting, and I'd like to set that up and have that discussion.
Do any members have any comments or questions?
If we need a motion to set that meeting, or?
Mr. Holstrom?
I know that the work has been done through the committee, and there's been a lot of discussion made through Wind Turbine, and now with the solar energy opportunities, there's a lot of stuff going on. At this point, I don't think the Board of Selectmen should become involved in any of those committee meetings until such time a recommendation comes forward, then we can take a position on one thing or another. But to sit down, it would be a workshop, people would be discussing the different energy alternatives, and it would be just another meeting in place. And unless there's a recommendation coming forward, I don't know if the Board of Selectmen would be a productive meeting to sit down with those.
Mr. Simone?
Well, through the Chair, I disagree. If you, looking at this purely from a business standpoint, I've never been part of any company that set a strategy in motion, as we have with the wind turbine. The Board of Selectmen was involved in the wind turbine project before I was on this board. I think it's been about five or six years going back now. I'm sure Mr. Plutukas would have the dates. But we set forth on a strategy, and we invested time, money, and a lot of other things, doing studies, getting facts on the wind turbine, and collecting data, and whether we should move forward with it or not. And we've done absolutely zero, to my knowledge, or maybe a little more than zero, as far as what's been proposed, other than people think it's a good idea to move forward with solar. So as I said, I've never worked for a company who said, hey, we're going to change our corporate strategy just because people think it's a good idea. Either give me facts that back up the fact that solar is better, and let the residents know that it's a better direction, maybe it's a combination of the two. I certainly can answer it. I'm not an energy expert. But all I do know is that it doesn't seem like anything's moving forward. Here we are, five years later. We collected all this data, we put up the tower, we did all these other things, we've spent money. There's been discussions on land, we built a road up to the tower, and now it's, we're not doing anything, because people are saying, I think this is a better idea. Either prove that it's a better idea or not. But to just say, we're not going to meet, we're not going to do anything, I mean, that really doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me.
Mr. Carpenter?
So Steve, you want to meet with the Wind Turbine Committee. I was at the last meeting, and I'm certainly not an expert on what the committee has done or hasn't done, so I'm not going to speak to it. I know certain members wanted to go towards solar. Obviously, we're at a point where the wind turbine is where it is in the state process, so I'm not opposed to meeting with the Wind Turbine Committee as a board, but I would like to see them as a committee, or the committee itself, form some sort of idea of what they want to do. Seems like solar just came up at the last meeting that I was at, and they're looking to gather information. So I don't know how much information we're going to glean from that, if we're not going to dig in as committee members ourselves and say, this is what we think is important. You know? I don't think we should just take the committee, which has done a tremendous amount of work, but I think in order to have a real dialogue, we as members would need to familiarize ourselves with the various things, and then we would be able to give some guidance in the form of a suggestion or a discussion. I don't feel that, personally for me, I don't know enough about it, that I don't feel that I would be a very good person to sit with, because I'd be asking them all the questions, and they'd be saying, but you asked for the meeting. So certainly in the future, I'd be open to it.
Mr. Simone?
Well, I understand, through the Chair, to Mr. Carpenter, I understand that point. I guess there's just a level of frustration, and I know there's some frustration among residents, because I hear, I've heard it, continue to hear it. We've spent all this time, we've spent all this money, we've done all these things. If not, if not the Board of Selectmen, someone needs to facilitate something moving forward. Like I said, it just doesn't make sense to do all of this work, everything that we've done, and maybe the wind turbine isn't the way to go. But the thing is, we have all of this data, we have all of these things that we've done in support of the wind turbine. I've seen nothing presented, other than just a negative side of the wind turbine, and I haven't seen anything put in front of me. I guess I would, you know, maybe ask Mr. Plutukas to come up and speak to it, but I haven't seen, in watching some of the Alternative Energy Committee meetings, I haven't seen anyone come up and say, well, we have all this research on solar, here's why it's so much better, or here's why it's not better. And the best thing for the residents is this. It's solar, it's the wind turbine, it's a combination of both, or maybe it's something else. But I do know that it just doesn't seem like we're moving forward, the times that it's been discussed, we're waiting to hear back from someone in Boston, or there's something else, and it just doesn't make sense to me. Why something that, you know, at least the majority of people agree, is a good thing for the residents of Auburn, and yet here we are, five to six years later, and we don't have either or anything as far as a wind turbine, a solar plant. turbine, a solar plan, data on solar, saying it's better, it's worse, whatever. I mean, so that frustration from the residents, to tell people that something's good for them and then not give it to them, I don't know. To me, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
If I may, just as a follow-up. Again, as a board, we have an obligation when we meet with someone. We ask them to take time out of their schedule. My personal feeling is, I need to have the facts before I'm going to ask another board to meet with me. And I understand that there's frustration. But again, this committee has been meeting for six years. Residents, I don't believe, have been knocking down their door. But certainly, Mr. Plutukas is not hiding under a bush or anything. If people have comments, Mr. Bernie's office is open. I'm sure Mr. Plutukas, I see him around town, here, there, and everywhere. And I'm sure, like the rest of us, he gets stopped and asked. If people have ideas or they have value to add to the discussion, then they need to contact the committee and let the committee vet it. And then, we as committee members, if we want to jump in or when it's appropriate to jump in, we need to do our homework as well. So that we're not just taking a recommendation from the committee, with all due respect to the committee and no disrespect meant. We need to do our due diligence and say, "Okay, we can see what they've done. And maybe we can do this. Maybe we can do that." And, you know, but I think the committee is struggling to find purpose. And if people are frustrated, we have a committee that is ready, willing, and able to hear from you. And they would love to hear from you. And they'd love for you to get involved. You know, it's very lonely serving on committees when you're working and, you know, the master plan, I think Adam can attest, I think we had seven people at our chair. That was about the high waterbar. And that was a 10-year process from start to finish. So, when we have committees of this like, we should be encouraging people to share their thoughts, talk to their, to their officials on that committee and try and move the process along.
Mr. Simoneon?
So, just, I don't, I don't think, I don't think we're very far apart on this. So, so let me, let me propose this a different way. I would ask that in the, before we commit to a meeting or ask the Alternative Energy Committee to commit to a meeting, then I guess I would ask the town to do the same diligence on solar as has been done on the wind turbine. So that any member of this board that's interested, or any resident or anyone else, could take those two side by side and understand why one might be better than the other, or why a combination of the two or something else might be. But as long as we, we have all this data over here and nothing to compare it to, then again, we're not moving forward. So, I do agree with Mr. Carpenter as far as, you know, we have to do the homework. But I have to have something to study in order to do the homework. So, you know, we spent all this time. The town was involved. Got all this data, all this information about solar, or I mean, about the wind turbine. There's opinion as to whether it's good or bad. So, I would ask that we have the same amount of information put, done for solar. And I can sit, as can anyone else, and do a side-by-side comparison. And then at that point, maybe it would be prudent to have the meeting with the Alternative Energy Committee.
If I'm not mistaken, we do have, town meeting did pass enabling action so the town manager can enter into solar farms. So, it's, so the town isn't standing still. The town meeting has taken action. I know we've had presentations to the town meeting. But again, the board, the Wind Turbine Committee or the Alternative Energy Committee is just beginning to have these discussions amongst themselves. So, I would defer to them, as they have been asked by the community, to take on this responsibility and let them figure out what it is that they want to focus on. It's their committee. It's something that they need to come at. And they've served for many years. And I know they've expressed frustrations themselves with not being able to move forward, you know, at a rapid clip. But the committee at their last meeting just discussed solar. And they're in the investigative stage. So, if we're interested, I'm certainly willing to go to their meeting and listen to what they have to say and the experts that two committee members offered to bring in on solar. So, certainly, I think they are not treading water. They're trying to progress. But unfortunately, when you're dealing with outside forces, timetables are not necessarily, they're fluid, let's put it that way.
You know, and I, and I would agree. I also, you know, saw the meeting in replay. And the Wind Turbine and Alternative Energy Committee is an advisory committee. I haven't seen an indication, at least, and please take your, you know, the Board of Selectmen's comments back to your board. But I haven't seen an indication that this committee is ready to either bring a recommendation back or a report to the Board of Selectmen at this point. I'm hearing Mr. Simoneon's comments, you know, and please share them with your committee, that, you know, maybe, maybe after some discussion, you may, the board should or may want to take a position on solar energy, wind energy. And when, when you've gathered this information and had participation from your own members, and is, am I correct that you're, you're down one member on that committee?
No.
You have a full complement of a board?
No.
Yeah, how many members? Please.
Can we have Mr. Plutukas join us at the table? He is Chairman of the Committee.
Right here, please. Yeah.
Right here.
Right here. Drop that.
Oh, you can join us.
Now, there's an honest man.
Mr. Plutukas, you're welcome to come up here and put your papers down. And we can hear you a little bit better from over here. So, if you could just address those couple of comment, questions first regarding the makeup of your board, whether you need more members, and if you feel that your board is ready to bring a recommendation or a report to this board.
It's an interesting question. And
Which one?
When I'm through answering it, I'll see why, you'll see what I mean by that. Originally, town meeting set up the committee as a five-member committee. The reason for that is, it's easy to work with. It's easy to find people, times when you can come. And your quorum is three people. A majority is three. You can function and do your work as three people. And I've also worked with Veterans Memorial Carrot Committee. Well, we had nine members. Much more difficult in getting your quorum. The committee was changed to be a seven-member committee. But we only had six members on it. Then one was appointed to make it six members. One resigned, and recently, another one resigned. So, we're down to four members. So, it's kind of hard when you're talking about a seven-member committee that has four working members, come to any decision. Because a quorum is four people, and a majority is four people. Because the committee is seven people. Now, you understand why I said it's an interesting question.
So, I just
With that background.
If I can ask a question before you move on. So, you, you said you had two recent resignations?
One was a long time ago.
Yeah.
And one was just recently.
So, you had one vacancy. Then you had one recent resignation?
We never, we were never seven.
Right. That's what I'm saying. You
We were never seven.
You were, you're a seven-member board. You were never seven because you always had that one vacancy.
Well, originally, we changed to seven. It, we had five members at the time.
Right. But
And we lost one. And one was appointed.
Right. But then you have two recent, two resignations. One recent and one
A long time ago.
Long time ago.
I think it was two years ago.
Okay.
Right. So, we're down to four people.
So, you had two vacancies on the committee until recently. And now you have three because you've had a recent resignation.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, no, we have five members on the committee. I, I must spoke there. We have five members. Four members were present at the last meeting.
Okay.
Okay. So, we have, so you have five members. One was absent at the last meeting, which meant we have four people present who could vote. But to carry a vote, you need four people because a majority is four of seven.
I understand that.
So, to get four out of four on any, on almost any issue is sometimes difficult. So, if you're looking for a position for us to come up with, it's, all you need is one person who has a question. And you're not going to have a vote of four. I think there were, after Mr. Vanderbrook was here when the original study came out, we really needed him to come back again and clarify some questions that other people on the committee had asked. Some people thought that his report was clear. A lot of it was scientific. We used to have an engineer sit with us at the meetings, and that was stopped. I had asked for Mr. Cleo to come back, but that hasn't happened to answer the engineering questions. Now, that study that came through has a lot of engineering facts in it. And a lot of the questions that Rick had asked really need to be answered by an engineer. I'm not an engineer. And no one else on the committee is, is an engineer presently. We have people in the construction trade. We've got business people. We've got scientists. And I was in education most of my life. So, it's a fairly well-rounded board. But sometimes you need an engineer to answer engineering questions. And one of the things that I thought was going to happen is that this, your committee was going to have Mr. Vanderbrook back again to clarify some of the questions. At least, I had hoped that he would. But I don't believe that there's any money left. I think there's $15,000 left out of that $85,000 grant. One of the things that might help, I think would help this committee and the town to understand the perspective of this is, this committee's been going on a long time, and the project's been going on a long time. There have been three studies done. And you mentioned the possibility, and Mr. Simoneon mentioned the possibility of having another study on solar to compare it to the wind turbine. Well, we had the WPI students do one of those, a very extensive one. And it might be practical, and it might be helpful. I don't know how many people on, on the Select Board have received all three studies. May I ask that question? Is that, is that a fair question to ask?
Have we, have
Have you received those three, those three studies?
No.
I think I got the WPI one, and that's it.
Then, you know, I don't know how you can really make a good decision on the wind turbine without having had that material presented to you.
That's our, that's our point. This is, and I just want to bring it back to the meeting.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Yeah. So
I didn't know that before, but now I know it. Perhaps the town could, give you those studies intact. And I think that when you read all three, and you see that they basically say all the same thing in a positive manner, I don't understand how you can turn it down.
Are you, when are you expected to meet next? I know you said you, you meet as agenda requires. Do you have any anticipated meeting date?
The last meeting, two of the members asked if they could do some work on solar. I thought that was great. As you know, we have worked with solar before. Mr. Simoneon did a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation, I believe it was three years ago, on using solar collectors at the town dump. And we haven't done anything with them since then. But the, the two gentlemen are going to get back to me, and they have some ideas. And then we will have a meeting and focus on solar. But still, we have questions on the wind turbine. I mean, if, when you're running a committee, and you're chairing, and you're trying to facilitate a project, you had people come in and object to the possibility of sound being a problem. And they filed a petition with you. I'm in favor of that sound study. But where is it now? It's being held at the state level. You don't, that sound study is not happening right now. I, personally, I've, I've been in business too. And I would have loved to see some of those practices applied on a state level where you would have that sound study at, at more expeditiously. I was told that the state was facilitating the installation of wind turbines, and that was facilitating in the last year or two, the process through which the application for a wind turbine would have to go through. I haven't seen any of that. I haven't seen any facilitation. And this would be an example of having that sound study within a month or two put through. And I think it's a complicated matter. I think it involves the problems that have it that Falmouth. And I think it has to do with the problems in Kingston, Mass. And, and if you go to those towns, you're going to find that people are at opposite ends of the spectrum. A lot of towns didn't plant out their wind turbines. We've studied it ad infinitum. They, what they did was, they jumped on the bandwagon when they found a gloss, a hull, excuse me, hull was making so much money off of one wind turbine. They wanted to get the same thing. And they maybe rushed it a little bit. The other thing is, we, I had expected the balloon test to be done. It's months ago that we said we were going to do a balloon test for the Piedmont Prospect Hill. And I would have loved to have seen it. I was told at the last meeting, it's only going to be for a day or two. I don't think that's long enough. I think it should be up for a week. And, but we still don't have a date on that. So, these things keep appearing on our agenda, but we don't have answers to them. And let's see what that would bring about.
Okay.
So, basically, we, right now, we have four members, five members on the committee. But four were present at the last meeting.
Right.
Get four people to come up with a policy on any one issue is going to be difficult for everyone to agree.
Okay. Well, I believe that, that some information on vacancies just went out. So, hopefully, someone watching will have an interest in putting in an application. So, you can have a full complement of the board. It sounds like you have some members working on information gathering. So, so once they have that information, you'll be having a meeting. Sure, schedule a meeting after they have that information available. So, if you could, at your next meeting, and please notify board members when it is, just share the board members' comments. We're not pressuring you. There's just a request for an anticipated report date, recommendation date, just so we know where the board is going.
Well, if someone's really interested in the far or against wind turbines
Right. And I think, you know, and I
Please join the committee.
Yeah. And I heard Mr. Simoneon's comments, you know, that the public is frustrated. Please, you know, bring, bring your comments. Not that we don't want them to bring them to us, but, but bring them directly to that board. Their meetings are advertised. They're posted properly. You know, we, I think, you know, it's important. We, we get all the time. We hear this. We hear that. I think it's important for people to step up to the plate, give their name, give their address, and, you know, state their concerns or comments. But to, to, Mr. Simoneon?
Just, um, why, why did your committee go from five to seven? I, is there a reason why you guys expanded?
That's when I first started, the town manager told me it was going to seven.
Through the Chair, I'd have to look back on what the reason was. I believe that there were six members of the committee. And you can't have an, you can't have an even number. So, it was either eliminate a member of the committee or add a member to it.
Okay.
And wanting to encourage people to participate. Rather than taking somebody off, we added to it. We did something similar to that with the Economic Development Committee. At one point, they were seven because we had seven. And then, we had trouble likewise getting a quorum. So, we moved it from seven down to five at the recommendation of the Chair, who is Selectmen's representative. So, we moved that to five. So, if that, if the recommendation is to move it back to five, we could certainly look at it. But at the time, we had six people who wanted to be on the committee. You can't have an uneven number.
Yeah, that's understandable. I just, with, with seven, and the quorum is four, it seems like you could deadlock on a lot of stuff. But
And we do, through the Chair, we, we did receive And we do, through the chair, we did receive one application for wind turbine recently, that I was actually looking at all of them this week, because we went out again to try to drum up some more applications on some of these. So we do have one to look at, but if people want to submit now, again, if we want to go back and look at five, then one, you already have five. So if we want to look at seven, then we need two. So, you know, this is the first time I've heard that there was a concern about the number, and I'm certainly open to having that discussion. Like I said, we did that with the Economic Development Committee. We moved it down to five, and that seemed to have worked out fine. So we could do that.
Anyone who's expressed concern to me, I've tried to steer them your way. Whether they get in touch with you or not, that's a whole different story, but.
Well, either recently I've had people come up to me and say that they're in favor of the wind turbine, and it's the number of people that have come up to me and said they're in favor of it, and that some, most people say it's a no-brainer. There have been two in all that time that have said the opposite. But many of them come up and they show me pictures on their phones of where they've seen wind turbines, and I should go and visit there.
Yeah.
But I've already seen a lot of those.
You know, and it's --
But my comments, the comments that people see, if I can finish it. The comments that people make to me at the post office and at other places have generally been very positive, including other town meeting members that said they would support it at any time, and would hope that it would be brought there, and that they would be more than happy to support it. Whether or not that's the majority of the people who actually vote. I think one of the successful parts about this meeting tonight is that I found out that the select board hasn't received the studies yet. And I really think you need that to make an intelligent decision. You've got the UMass one, you've got the WPI one, and you've got the one that we earned an $85,000 grant. The first UMass study was a grant also. And these are three different groups that don't even know each other, all coming to the same conclusion that the wind turbine is a great idea there. And please keep in mind that when you start talking about one megawatt of electricity, you have to clear one acre around the wind turbine to generate that much electricity. But if you want to do that with solar collectors, you have to clear cut the trees for five to six acres in some cases. That's a lot of clear cutting, and we don't know the effects of that. We don't know the effects on the watershed. We don't know any of the effects of the cleanup afterwards. The fields that I've seen on 495, a lot of times they're banging these posts deeply into the ground. And that's coming from a person who had a solar collector on my house. And I heated my hot water for 25 years with solar collectors. I had a solar collector on my house in 1975. It's not that I'm not interested in solar. I know it works. I had 140-degree water temperature all day. You do as many washes as you wanted. And it often baffled me why more people weren't using it, and why we weren't using it in schools when you needed, you know, all the kids taking showers and everything, and it was a perfect way to do it. Once they're up, there's no expense, and no maintenance for 25 years. So I'm in favor of solar, however, I'm also a trail of them, you know? I think that it's important that we do that, but we also need that Vanda Brook to come back in at some point. We need the balloon test, and.
Well, we'll get an update on all that. Mr. Simoneon, you okay with holding off the joint meeting right now?
I'm fine.
And I'll just ask the chairman to work with the town manager to see, she's the appointing authority, see what you want to do with the makeup of the committee to make it work best so that you have a quorum for these meetings, and that you, you know, you can take a position on these. And we'll put this on, I don't know if we'll be ready for the next meeting, an update on the balloon, the informational packets, and the Vanderbroek meeting, whether that's still going to happen. Certainly, we're not going to bring him into your meeting as well as ours, so, yes, you can.
You have one more point?
Yeah.
The wind turbine creates wealth from nothing, from the air. It pays for itself the whole time. It pays for the loan, it pays for a maintenance agreement, and it brings in 20 years approximately $3 million in income into the town. The wind turbines in Sterling that were up there, were up there for almost 40 years. So we're going to get more than $3 million out of this, out of a proposed wind turbine. Why do we need that money? Someplace along the line, we made the mistake of spending $2 million, over $2,500,000 on that land already. What am I talking about? We bought it for about three, one, the original purchase was about $300,000. Two, they took the town to court and said that wasn't a fair value. And they got another $300,000. Now we're up to $600,000. And guess what? The town authorized the taxpayers, us, to spend on design and engineering for high school up there, one, almost $1.9 million. So now we're up to $2,500,000 that's down the tube, unless we find some way to bring that money back and give it back to the taxpayers. And that's one of the purposes of the wind turbine. And it would do it. So as a taxpayer, I see this as a reason to go ahead. Now, can you have a wind turbine and solar? Of course you can. But you've got concerns on that hill. You've heard Rick and other people explain to you that it's a lot of ledge and wetlands. The footprint of a wind turbine is, you know, not even as big as this room. And then it goes straight up. So, but if you're talking about covering five acres with solar collectors, how do we get through conservation?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make that one point, because I think the taxpayers need to know how much money has been spent on that land already that we're not going to get anything back from.
So we'll put that on the list to get an update on that as well.
We should learn from our mistakes so that in the future, the town doesn't spend money like this. This is long before the town manager came here. But, I mean, $2,500,000? And those sitting in the audience who've worked on other committees know of hundreds of thousands of other dollars that have been wasted, I know. Sorry.
Well, the town manager will have the discussion with you on the makeup of the committee. She'll report back to us on that. We'll get information on the rest, and you're doing --
My preference is five feet.
You're doing good work, and we'll wait for your report and recommendations, but we'll get this information in the meantime.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the last item, Mr. Simoneon.
Yeah, so I went back and forth on this, and here's the thing. Anyone, anyone who's seen me up here four years knows that I've never wanted to set precedent, bad precedent, so I'm not going to go against my own philosophy and start doing that now. For over a year, I held office hours, and then after about four, it was a pretty good stream of folks for a year. And then for about four or five months, I didn't have anyone, so I approached a different way. Anyone who emailed me or called me or, you know, addressed me out in public, I just told them I'd be happy to sit down and meet with them. So on this item, I'm just going to say this. If you're going to send me an email from an address that when I reply to it, it comes back and it's obviously not a valid email, or you're going to call me from a block number and address me or another member of this board, one thing I won't stand for is anyone, you know, speaking poorly of the other four people that I sit up here with. So I'm not going to address this item other than to say that if you want to have me address an issue, I'm happy to do that anytime. But don't call me from a block number and just start making accusations. Don't send me an email that when I reply to it, it's obviously a bogus email, and expect me to bring that to the town manager or to the other members of this board. And that's all I'm going to say on that. So, but I ain't going to apologize to the board for even having a waste of two minutes I just wasted discussing that.
Is there any, are there any other member items? Is there any additional public comment? We have no minutes. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's in favor. I'll get you.